Good evening and welcome to the April 14, 2022 Planning Commission Meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Some of the items, the Planning Commission has the final decision authority, and others, the City Council will make the final decision. Planning Commission is made up of seven individuals that are appointed by the City Council to serve for three-year terms for a maximum of six. Tonight, we do have all seven of us here, so we do have a quorum. And tonight, we have five items in front of the Planning Commission, three of those being public hearings. And beyond that, before we start, let's go ahead and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so again, we have five items in front of us tonight, but before we begin, we are in a hybrid environment where folks are, and the public are allowed to testify remotely if they choose to. And Mr. Markergard, you want to give some information for those?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we are live here at City Hall, and people can testify here live, but we also allow remote testimony. And to testify remotely, you would just call the number on the screen and then enter in the access code, and we will have this number scrolling across the bottom of the screen throughout the two items, first two items tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Markergard. And with that, we'll go ahead and go to our first item, which is a conditional use permit for Minnesota Developmental Basketball. Mr. Centenaro, you have the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Okay, let me know if you have any difficulty hearing me, but the first item on tonight's agenda is what's really a cleanup conditional use permit for an athletic training facility. Minnesota Developmental Basketball, or MDB, has been in operation for a number of years on West 98th Street, but we found out that a conditional use permit was never approved for that, for that use, so we are trying to clean up the record. So I think most of us are, excuse me, most of us are familiar with the subject site on West 98th Street, not too far from where you are sitting right now. And there's, there are a number of athletic training-type uses within this building. In addition to basketball, there was a lacrosse use, gymnastics, and cheerleading, in addition to some more traditional warehouse and office uses. From a zoning perspective, this site is zoned for industrial uses, and athletic training is permitted through a conditional use permit. But you can see in this image, there's a variety of different zoning districts that are in this area. We have industrial to the, on this site, and to the north and the east, but then there's also civic uses, Creekside to the southwest, and Civic Plaza to the southeast, and then single-family residential right across the street. And this is what the site looks like during the day typically. You know, the athletic training uses tend to peak in the evening on the weekdays, but during the day, the existing tenants that are more office or warehouse in nature, there really isn't too much of a parking demand. So again, what we see from a parking perspective is really, the peak is in the evening, and so there has consequences for lighting, but then also just generally traffic or parking demand when multiple athletic training facilities are operating simultaneously, and I'll comment on that a little bit more. And so you can see, this is the facade of the building, you can see MDB has that orange sign with the lacrosse use across the hallway. And one thing that comes up with these types of conditional use permits, or any conditional use permit where there's a change of use, one of the triggers that we have is for exterior lighting, and you can see on the top of the roof, a variety of wall pack style lights, and those are relatively new. They were installed after other conditional use permits for facilities were reviewed and approved by the city. And one of those conditions to operate those facilities was to bring the parking lot up to current standards, especially with a lot of children peeking at night, you know, dark half the year in the evening. Having adequate lighting is vitally important, and the lighting here has been upgraded. The floor plan is pretty simple. There's the graphic that the applicant provided to us. The main space is a large training area, and I have a photo of that in a moment, and there's a small lobby with a couple offices, and then the entrance to the parking lot. What this is, and this is what that floor plan looks like in reality. Again, you see the large, open space, a variety of, several basketball courts. I believe in this particular image, there was six, six students, I think that's a fairly regular-style number in the project description, they gave a maximum, but all in all, it's not a particularly intense use, and I think that contributed to the city not really being aware of the lack of a conditional use permit. If it was much more intense, tends to get more attention than a use like this. Again, going to the lighting, a previous application led to photometric plans being prepared for the site. And again, we do have very prescriptive lighting standards, and the photometric plan is what we use to review whether or not the proposed lighting upgrades are compliant. In this case, the plan was approved and the lights were installed. With that, we are recommending approval. This is a Planning Commission decision, subject to a three-business-day appeal, but I do have the recommended motion for you below.
All right, thank you, Mr. Centenario. Any questions for staff on this one? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Centenario, is there an into-your-trash requirement for this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, yes, there is, and I believe there is a condition that the trash needs to remain inside the building until there's pickup, and so, you know, ultimately, for pickup, there would be some trash outside, but the intent is to keep it inside the building the majority of the week.
Anybody else, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Question, have staff or the police ever received any complaints on this location or this facility in the past, you know, few years?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, I'm not aware of any complaints for this application or this tenant. As part of a, as part of our routine development process, we have Development Review Committee, and as part of that committee, you know, the fire marshal, in addition to a variety of city staff, the fire marshal and the police are able to provide comments. If they have concerns with certain activities, or if there's a particular issue that they want to bring to light, that typically comes up during that process, and no issues have been identified or complaints identified.
Just to follow up, if I may, is that also for parking? Just confirm that there's been no parking complaints either?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you know, I think, I think we did hear, a few years ago, when I believe, I might get it mixed up, either the gymnastics or the cheerleading use first opened, it does get pretty busy in the evening. The, there was a parking study that was done that concluded that while there is a fair amount of parking that is needed, there was sufficient stalls on-site. More recently, at least in the past few years, we haven't heard of any complaints on inadequate parking on-site.
Thank you.
All right, anybody, Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Centenario, and I apologize if you said this and I missed it, but how did it come to the attention of the Planning Division that we were short a CUP in this area?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, you know, I think it was a result of having other conditional use permits on the site. You know, when a business is in operation for a number of years, you know, I think it's just nature, human nature to assume that they went through the process that's needed, but with the other activity on the site, and, you know, we saw that there was a sports-training-type use, you know, we do some research on other approvals on various sites, and nothing came up for this particular tenant. And so they were notified, gosh, a few years ago, back, I think it was in 2019, and they started the process to go through a conditional use permit. Eventually, you know, the pandemic hit, and we didn't pursue enforcement action to force an application, but they're, they're back this year.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions for staff on this one? All right, if not, Mr. Centenario, is the applicant here or available to speak?
You know, Mr. Chair, I left a message for the applicant and sent an email, but I was not, I did not get confirmation, so I don't know if they're in attendance tonight.
Okay, Mr. Markergard, do you know online?
Mr. Chair, they are not online. I would look at the people in the audience, see if any of them are...
I got some head shaking from them, so.
Okay.
All right, well, then, at this point, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, and with that, I'll ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak to this item. And not seeing any, Mr. Markergard, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
Mr. Chair, everybody online is either staff, or they're here for another item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Markergard. All right, Commission members, seeing nobody in the audience in the chambers right now that'd like to speak to this item, nor anybody online, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, moving on, Commission members, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Public hearing is now closed on this item. Discussion? Maybe I'll just start out here, Mr. Centenario, I mentioned it, Richfield Gymnastics, RGC is in that building, my daughter does attend that, and to the question of parking, her time periods have moved throughout the week and weekend, and I think to the point, a couple of years ago, there was some issues with parking, but I haven't seen that in the last couple of years, and maybe that's, well, there's obvious reasons for the past couple of years, I suppose, but there is additional parking that was left that people weren't utilizing, so there, that hasn't seemed to be an issue, and I've seen that orange sign for the years that my daughter's been going, so with that, I think this is very compatible with the other uses in the building, and I'll support the application. If not, if there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in case PL 2022-62. Having been able to make the required findings, I move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an athletic training facility at 2000 West 98th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roman. All right, Commission members, we have a motion to recommend adoption or approval of a conditional use permit, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second, but Commissioner Cookton. All right, Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an athletic training facility at 2000 West 98th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. Any further discussion? Not seeing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. This is a final decision unless an appeal is received by 4:30 PM on April 19th. Again, I'll repeat that, this is a final decision unless an appeal is received by 4:30 on April 19th. Moving on to item number two, conditional use permit for car wash, and I believe, Ms. O'Day, you have a staff report for us?
I do. Are you able to see my screen and hear me okay?
We certainly can.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Item two on your agenda this evening is for a conditional use permit and final site and building plans to construct an existing office into an automated car wash. The subject property is 200 West 98th Street. It's on the north side of 98th Street between Lyndale and Niccollet Avenues. Surrounding land uses include single-family to the south, multifamily to the north, and office and commercial land uses to the east and west. I'll highlight Pierce, Skate &amp; Ski, which is a notable applicant in this, or contact in this application, they're the neighboring property to the west, and then also note that there is a Holiday Gas Station at the corner of 98th and Niccollet Avenue. Here are a couple photos of existing site conditions, this is looking slightly northwest on 98th Street. The building currently is a multi-tenant office building, and it's about 8,000 square feet. And then here's another photo looking slightly northeast on 98th Street, and then lastly, another photo looking directly at the back of the site from West 97th Street. So here's the submitted site plan. The access on 98th Street would remain the same, the Pierce, Skate &amp; Ski and the subject site share the same access on the south here. The access off 97th Street would be shifted slightly. The applicant would install an eight-foot-wide sidewalk on 98th Street, and the site plan is showing an eight-foot-wide sidewalk along West 97th Street, which can be reduced down to six feet wide per code. And then a couple notable things about the site plan, here I have highlighted the 10 vacuum spaces along the west side of the property, as well as four regular spaces, highlighted in purple. Then there is a canopy on the east side for payment, as well as a queuing, three wide-access lane, or queuing lanes on the east side. And then as far as circulation goes, you can either access the site from 98th Street or 97th Street, and also exit out of that access, and then you can either travel down to use the vacuums, which are on the west side, or go down to the south end of the site, where you can enter through the access lane and then queue up for payment, and then you would go kind of around the site to the north end of the building where the entrance is, and then out through the south of the building. Where I've highlighted here is a bypass lane. And then here are a couple minor modifications that need to be made to the site plan. The code requires a 20-foot landscape yard along the street. The site plan is showing the landscape yard off by a foot or so on both 98th and 97th Street. This is a code requirement, so staff will be revealing and ensuring that this requirement is met with the building permit. And then as far as parking goes, the code requires 14 parking spaces for the car wash. We are providing 14 spaces, 10 of which are vacuum, and the other four are regular spaces. There, they are highlighted in yellow for the vacuum, as well as the red for the regular spaces. The code also requires eight queuing spaces behind the car wash, and six stacking spaces behind the first point of contact, and they are providing adequate queuing and stacking space, so we meet code. And then in order for the neighboring property to maintain their parking compliance, the applicant would construct six stalls dedicated to Pierce, Skate &amp; Ski. So revised parking and access easements must be recorded and filed with Hennepin County, and the property owner did provide a letter to staff and support and to proceed with the application. And here I have circled in red are the spaces dedicated to Pierce, Skate &amp; Ski. Yeah, submitted site plan does need some tweaking, they aren't showing the public sidewalks, but the material, landscape material must be placed outside of the sidewalk area. Also, the plan is missing nine trees, some of which can be planted, or must be planted in the parking islands, which is a code requirement, and then lastly, they must provide a solid three-foot screen along the south end of the site to shield vehicle headlights leaving the car wash, where my cursor is here. And then here is the first floor plan, most of the space is the single bay car wash, but there are indoor trash area and an employee area on the first floor. And then on the second floor, there are equipment platforms and observation mezzanine and an owner office area. As far as building materials, the applicant is proposing a mix of brick, brick, metal, glass as primary materials, and fiber cement and concrete masonry units as secondary materials. And then here are two images of the front and back, and then here are the sides of the building. And then noise, staff has had early concerns about noise with this facility. ESI Engineering conducted a noise study in 2022, February 2022, and the final, the full study is in your packet. A couple considerations with noise, there is nearby residential to the immediate north and south, and commercial to the east and west of this property. The car wash hours are from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, so the nighttime noise standards would not apply in this instance. And then the noise study mostly used the L50 standard because it assumes the worst-case noise scenario, so the noise level must not exceed 60 dB at the residential receiver and 65 dB at the commercial receiver. So here's an image showing approximate distances to those receivers, receivers, for example, for the northern edge of the car wash to the single-family dwelling is about 213 feet, and from the northern building edge to the multifamily apartments, it's about 183, and then from the vacuums, it's 161. And to the west of the building, it's 100 feet and 78 feet on the east side. So here's a contour map showing noise levels without any mitigation, the orange area, the brown, or the reddish area, they're above 70 dB, which clearly reaches all surrounding properties and is clearly not compliant, and the biggest noise sources are the dryer blowers and the vacuums and the audio speaker. The engineering firm did provide a few recommendations to bring down the noise, they recommended installing mufflers on all vacuums and reducing the blower speed by 50%, down to 30 Hz. This map shows noise levels with those mitigation measures, and as you can see, it significantly brings down the noise impact. Here's a graphic showing typical noise sources and their noise level, a typical vacuum cleaner is 75 dB, and according to the source, anything above, anything above, what is it, 80 to 89 dB is harmful. So as such, staff is recommending several conditions related to noise. Staff is recommending all vacuums have mufflers. Second, staff does not support reducing the speed of the blowers because employees can manually adjust the speed and because it's challenging to enforce. Therefore, staff is recommending that the blowers must not, must meet the noise code as installed. Also, the noise study measured the audio system at 71 dB, 48 feet from the speaker, however, our code requires no more than 75 dB, five feet from the speaker, so the noise study must be revised to reflect that requirement and provide mitigation. Lastly, we are requiring a noise test must be conducted prior to certificate of occupancy, and a signed report must be provided to show compliance. And then a couple miscellaneous items, the lighting plans must be revised to show compliant light levels, and the site plan must be modified to show a sidewalk connection from the primary building entrance to 98th Street. Again, this is a code requirement, so staff will be reviewing this with the building permit. And then the plans are showing non-compliant signage, so the applicant must reveal the code and apply for a separate sign permit. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the, both the conditional use permit and the final site and building plans. This is a final decision by the Planning Commission, and I believe the applicant Tanner Brandt, as well as the acoustical engineer, is available for any questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. O'Day. Commission members, are there any questions for Ms. O'Day on this? Go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, my question is related to the, I believe it's a write-in, write-out from 98th, is that correct?
Yeah, let me go back to the, seeing if I have an aerial view that shows it a little better. Oh, shoot, it's blocked by this label here, but it is a write-in, write-out. There's a median, I don't know if you can see the tail end of it here where my cursor is, so you cannot turn, turn left out of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, wait, sorry. Yeah.
Is that right?
It doesn't look like it.
Sorry, yeah, sorry about that. So that's, I was actually looking at this access and not this access. So travelers can travel left onto 98th Street. There's a median where my cursor is.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. One question I have is really around the location of this property and the proximity to the Lyndale Avenue. I know we did a large study on Lyndale Avenue and redevelopment, is this property subject to the Lyndale Avenue development plans, or is it outside?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman. I do have a slide that shows, so a couple things with this, it is inside the 98th Street station area plan, as you can see on the left side, this is kind of the total 98th Street station area boundary, and then zooming in on the right, I have the site circled in in yellow, and the 98th Street boundary kind of on the, in the green here. So this site is in the 98th Street station area plan, and then as far as the Lyndale Avenue, this is the corridor map showing the entire area, and then, as you can see, it stops just right of Lyndale Avenue, and the site would be right here. So it is outside of the Lyndale Avenue corridor.
Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, the sidewalk on 97th Street, and I'm going to get a dirty look from Commissioner Roman here, but is that a sidewalk to nowhere? And is it, and I don't mean that as a joke, I believe it is a sidewalk to nowhere, and so my question is, is that a required sidewalk, or could they leave that as an easement, or...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton. It is a sidewalk to nowhere, for lack of a better term, there is no sidewalk on West 78th Street, they are required to put in a sidewalk per code, and City Council can waive that, or waive construction of a sidewalk, but they decided, the applicant decided to install the sidewalk.
Great, thank you.
Any other Commissioners with questions? Ms. O'Day, I'll just, one, you mentioned it on the south end of the property, and I just want to clarify, the three-foot screening... just want to clarify, the three-foot screening to, effectively, it's for traffic, right, not bothering roadway traffic. And it just, point of clarification for me, understand why that's on 98th. Why is that not on 97th as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you can see here, there is screening provided basically here where my cursor is, which makes sense as, as vehicles are queuing up, headlights are shining in this general direction. And then as you turn and go into the car wash, your headlights aren't shining onto the public. But as you leave the site and face south, then your vehicles are, are in view of the public. So that's why it's required on the south side. And they are providing a little bit on the, on the north side where it's required.
Okay, no. So you clarified it, that it being provided already on the north side. The next question is, could you go back to the slide with the distances? That went a little quick for me between the use and adjoining properties. So that's 213 feet to the south. Is that correct?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's from the southern edge of the building to the northern edge of the single-family dwelling. It's 213 feet.
And to the north?
To the north, it's 183 from the building structures.
And the vacuums, what is that?
161 feet.
161, okay. All right. Anybody else? Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, I think you mentioned, just want to clarify that you mentioned there are six shared parking with the tenant or the building next door. Is that separate from the 14 required by code for this business?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abdi, that is correct. It's purely dedicated to Pierce, Skate and Ski and would be entirely on, on their property.
Go ahead. Okay, all right. Any other questions for staff? Otherwise, at this point, we'll go to the applicant. Does the applicant, are you available here tonight? I don't know. They're in the, we have several people in the chamber, so I just want to make sure and I'm getting head shakes. No. So Mr. Markergard, is the applicant online?
Mr. Chair, they are. Mr. Tanner Brandt represents the applicant. And then Mr. Baxter is the noise consultant.
Okay. Mr. Brandt or Mr. Baxter?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
All right. Well, thank you for your time this evening. And thank you, Liz, for laying that all out for us. As she mentioned, we're presenting here Tommy's Express Car Wash. I guess I'll just lay out a few, few information points about the, about our concept. I guess, Liz, if you could go to one of the site plans, I'd just like to talk about a couple of things that we have in our wash. So Tommy Express Car Wash, these are, and these are automated car washes. You never get out of your car as you go through the wash. There are three lanes. One closest to the building has a cashier that takes cash and credit card. The second lane has an automated credit card reader that will let you pay for your wash through there. The third line, third lane is for Tommy Club members. This is a monthly membership where you pay a monthly fee and you get unlimited car washes by, for paying that fee. You can go every day as long as you pay the fee and you get to go through the fast pass line there. Tommy's Express, you've the state-of-the-art technology, really from the beginning to the end of the process. As you drive up, it, they, the technology uses license plate readers to read your license plate as you drive up. We'll let you through. You go in around the radius to the north into the walk. And there is a conveyor belt system that it uses. So it's different than a chain and roller wash that you're, you know, used to seeing. These are, this is a conveyor belt system that physically pulls your car through the wash. As you, and I guess the other thing to note is we have reclamation tanks, a reclamation system that we use that reclaims about 33% of the water that's used in the wash and uses it for cars coming in later as, on the lower portions of the car. Let's see, as she mentioned on the west side there, we have the vacuum stalls. They're free for customers. Here's one other thing I wanted to note about the parking. Yes, Liz, you go back to that slide with the parking, the shared parking. So there's, where it says two and two on that, the top one there, two of the, the two spaces on the north will be ours. Those are actually two spaces each. And then the two spaces on the south side of that will be for Pierce. And then we will be, we will be building the four spaces on their property. So just a quick clarification point there. So it's the same amount of parking. We just don't have any on the left side there. It's just two on the north side that are ours and two on the south side that are Pierce's. And then just to, when it comes to the noise points, I think Tony's here, he can, he can talk to some of those points if you, and he can answer some of those questions better than I can. But we do plan, it is a variable system that we were able, that, you know, the franchise offers. And we're planning to put in the variable system and then it will be set so that 100% of the variable system will be the 30 Hz. So the 100%, the highest that we can get it will be the one that is compliant with the noise. We'll have our electricians rig it so we cannot turn it up any higher than that. That will be the highest that we can go. And then we also can just set the, the top limit of that volume for the speaker. We'll set that at a compliant level as well. We'll, we're obviously open to any of the inspections or testing that we need to do before receiving a CO. And we, and as she mentioned, we plan to put noise, for example, the vacuum. So I guess with that, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Brandt, looks like Commissioner Albrecht has one for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brandt, four spaces seem like, not, not very much for employees on the site. I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how many employees you'll have at any given point and where they will expect to park while they are working?
Yes. So the nice thing about having an automated car wash is we don't have very many employees on one shift at a time. We typically have two to three max on a shift. There's typically, it's typically just one cashier, manager, and then maybe a maintenance. We typically have a regional manage or a maintenance person. And as we build more in the area, we'll have more regional manage, manager as well. So those three spaces, there are four spaces should be plenty for, for what we need.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brandt, we're putting some conditions of approval on here about slowing down fan speeds and, and putting mufflers on vacuums. I just wanted to hear from you. I appreciate that your willingness to do that. Is, are we killing you here? Or just wanted to hear from you, how is that affecting your business? Are you still able to use this facility in the way you want to?
Yeah, I think so. You know, I've talked it over with the, with the operations team and they don't see that being an issue. I mean, they'll, it'll slow down the, the fans a little bit, but I think, you know, I don't know if they're necessarily running at that full 60 Hz, if you need to run that at those, at other washes anyways. So I, we don't see any issue with running it at the 30 Hz.
Thank you.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess I have a follow-up question from Commissioner Albrecht. She asked about how many employees, and I'm looking at overall, how many employees do you, do you anticipate hiring for all, covering all shifts?
That is more of an operations question, but I think, I think we typically have manager, probably a couple maintenance, and then probably three or four shifts of cashiers. I would say we'd probably have 10 employees total.
Thank you.
All right. Other commissioners? Any further questions for the applicant on this particular item? If I can, if I could switch to Mr. Baxter, just a question on the model. And looking at that, it, it looks like the noise model is going right, I mean, it looks like, I think, the 60 Hz is going right up to that north property building. Can you explain that a little bit? In the, I guess the, yeah, the mitigated model?
Yes, good evening. Right, you can, you can see the sources on the left side of the, the building is in the white, right? On the left side, you can see the 10 vacuums. And you can also see the entrance. There's a little bump on the north side of the building that is the entrance. So, which in the noise there is fairly directional, is going more to the north. And those, yeah, so the, so the contours are, are not round. They end up, from all the sources, they end up being more of an, more of an ellipse, elliptically, ellipse around the building. Similarly, on the south side, you can see the red, the exit, where in, in, at that exit or where the dryer fan noise is, is the loudest as well. And the noise is directional, so it's more elliptical.
And just, if you can refresh us, so we've had some, some numbers on and some discussions on noise in the last several months. Just kind of looking at this again, what, what are the limits in residential? As I'm looking to the north there, it, it looks like we're at the 55, 60. Is that right?
Right. So the, the limit for residential, we consider daytime operation, which, which the, the car wash will only operate during the daytime hours. And daytime is from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I believe the car wash is, Tanner, you can correct this, but is from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The, the limit is an L-50 of 60 dB during the daytime. And L-50 is the, is the median. It's the, the level that it would be exceeded 50% of the time.
Okay, thank you. 50% of the time, okay. All right. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Baxter on this item? I was just looking for a little clarification, so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Baxter. Thank you, Mr. Brandt. We don't have any further questions for you at this time. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And I'll remind folks here in the chambers here tonight, what we like to do is have you come up, if you'd like to speak to the item, address the chair, myself, with any questions. And if the planning commission feels those questions are worth continuing to, to dive into, we'll, we'll discuss those or ask the applicant of those. And what we ask also is that we limit the initial discussion to three minutes each. And then after everybody's had a chance to go through, we may, if points haven't been covered, allow you to come back up again. So with that, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? You guys take your turn. So, yep. And if you haven't signed in already, please sign in and then identify yourself for us so we know what to address you by.
Leo Hoffman, 140 West 98th Street. I own half the office building there.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hoffman, maybe you want to put the microphone closer to you?
Okay, Chair and Commissioners, just had one quick question, or a couple of quick ones. It's not permitted use, so I have zoning laws. Would you build a, an office building next to, on a vacant lot next to an car wash? Do you think that's be a good plan to take advantage of a vacant lot, you know, like you say, next door to a car wash? I'd like to have a fence along the east property line to screen off all the cars that are going to sit there. And one more question, looking at the site plan, I have no, they must be going to haul the snow off the site. Because I don't see any spots that are possible for the amount of snow we get there. Because I know we get a lot in our parking lot. We usually get a big mound every year, actually two, three mounds. And it's a pretty big lot there, so.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
So, yep, I got your questions here on the fence, the snow storage. And I think the others are more of zoning questions, so we'll leave that for now. Next individual?
Good evening. My name is Jeff Ames. I'm owner of the property directly to the east and the owner of the business. And my questions are why, there's obviously a number of reasons why this use is not allowed in this zoning area. And I'm wondering why we would allow this conditional use. The noise mitigation techniques that are proposed seem to be barely bringing the noise into the requirements. The, the study that, that they're, they show from their, the other location shows that their, their noise excessively exceeds the requirements for the zoning in this location. I'm all for development in this, in our area. It's good for all of us for proper development. But it's, obviously this doesn't meet the zoning requirements. I don't know if the apart, the homeowners to the south or the apartment building residents to the north are going to be represented, but I would definitely like to speak up for them because I couldn't imagine sitting on my patio to, in one of those apartment buildings directly to the north of this property with, with this noise. And that's all. I think there's a number of reasons why they, they don't meet the zoning requirements, but the noise being number one.
Okay, thank you. And was it, was it Mr. Ames?
Ames.
Ames.
Ames with an H.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ames.
Hi, Chair, Commissioners. My name's Kim Cousins. I happen to clean that office building, Leo's office building. First of all, I don't see that noise at 55 dB goes right to the front door. So, and I can imagine the people in there are going to be hearing that all day. I know if you're considering daytime, seven till 10, we have a lot of women that are counselors in that building with children coming in and out of there. We have women that have women clients that come in and leave eight, nine at night. I don't think safety-wise for them people. I see the kind of kids that hang out over at Holiday at that car wash. By the way, there's a car wash in the area, several down Lindale. I don't know why they need another one here. And again, with the noise level, I don't see how that's appropriate. I think it'll slow down a lot of traffic on 98th Street, which is already busy. And I think safety reasons with the kids that hang out at car washes. Me, I'm alone a lot. And if they hang out there at night, I've got to walk out that door every night by myself, sometimes two in the morning. And I just, I think for the women and the children that come in and out of that building, I think there's a big safety thing there. And I agree with him that the people living in those apartments do not want to sit and hear that all day long, all night long. Some people have kids, 10 o'clock daylight. I just don't see trying to put your kid to bed at 8 o'clock with that kind of noise and cars and kids and horns and everything else going off. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, so Commissioners, I'm Kent Olson, Bloomington resident, and I speak tonight in opposition to this proposal. Specifically, I disagree with finding number two, which states the proposed use is not in conflict with the 98th Street Station Area Plan. Today I spent a significant, significant amount of time reviewing the 98th Street Station Area Plan. And quoting from the plan, "To fully support transit-oriented development, private properties need to redevelop in a manner that incorporates density, enhances the public and pedestrian realm, and mitigates circulation issues. The area has historically been the core of Bloomington and continues to be a focal point for residents and travelers today. Over the past 30 years, some improvements have been made that make the area more transparent." today. Over the past thirty years, some improvements have been made that make the area more transit-supported and pedestrian-friendly. Despite these improvements, the auto-oriented character remains." Going on, however, the continued dominance of roads and parking lots detracts from the mixed-use downtown character that previous planning efforts envisioned. While some attempts were made to create a more urban character, overall development reflected an upgraded suburban strip mall model. With the planned Orange Line BRT scheduled to begin service in twenty-twenty-one, the time is right to consider a new vision for the area that can both leverage and support the significant enhancement in transit service the area will soon enjoy. Specifically referring to this site, known as Area, Area E, the plan indicates the area to the east of the station is an important connection to neighborhoods and Kennedy High School. Attention to the built environment is required to help create a comfortable, walkable neighborhood. Related to the zoning of this site, the plan indicates the B-two zoning district is not compatible with the station area plan's vision. Existing zoning districts have permitted and encouraged a built environment that is auto-oriented. As the area enters its next phase of development, rezoning properties can help to encourage a built environment that creates a sense of place, is inviting to pedestrians, and best supports the high-frequency transit line. The specific parcel in this proposal has not been rezoned as envisioned in the plan, presumably because of the perceived low likelihood of redevelopment. But certainly the plan envisions B-four as a more appropriate zoning for this site. Considering all this, I believe the proposal is in conflict with the Ninety-Eighth Street Station area plan. In the past, Commissioner Cookton has expressed his frustration with our failure to attract to the south loop developments that reflect the goal of a true urban character. I believe this proposal reflects a similar missed opportunity in the Ninety-Eighth Street Station area. It's hard to imagine a more auto-oriented development than a car wash. Thank you, Chair, Silver and Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, appreciate that. All right, uh, Mr. Markergard, is there anybody online that would like to speak to this item?
Uh, Mr. Chair, let me check the list here. And it looks like everybody online is either staff or on the applicant team.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Markergard. And with that, as I mentioned at the outset, uh, did anybody want to come up with, uh, readdress the, uh, Planning Commission at this point? No? All right, all right.
This is Tanner Brant again, if I could just, just, uh, respond to some of that, if that's okay?
Uh, hold on, Mr. Brant, just, uh, we'll, we'll clarify in a minute for you, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
All right, uh, so, Commission members, um, if there's any of the questions that were brought up that you want to bring to the applicant, we can certainly do that at this point. Um, but I'll, I'll leave it up to you, because each of us heard some different things, I think, so, um, I would ask a couple of things of you, Mr. Brant, and, um, if you can, I, I think Mr. Hoffman brought up, a- and we'll just, uh, go with, start with fence on the east property line. Um, was that considered in your development proposal?
I don't believe it was, but I don't, uh, you know, if there's room there, I don't see an issue with, with putting some kind of a fence or, or a screen in there.
All right, and then maybe the second one, can you address, um, and, and we've certainly seen this in other locations, um, how you would take care of snow storage, because it does look like an awful lot of that, uh, parcel is used up by driving locations, so.
Yeah, yeah, I know we have in, um, locations in the past, we, you know, we'll get a truck in there and haul it off, um, to other, other places for, for snow storage, uh, that, you know, we'll, we'll find the best spot possible onsite, but then whatever needs to be moved, we, uh, we, we don't have an issue doing that, that's, we're definitely open to that.
So you're doing that at other locations right now, Mr. Brant?
Yes, I know, I know we have in other locations, whether it be car washes or other, um, retail that we've, that we've done.
All right, other, uh, Commission members right now, any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any, Mr., Mr. Brant, um, I'll give you an opportunity, you said you, anything else you'd like to address?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to mention that, uh, you know, we're, we're looking at, at redeveloping this, this piece of land that's, uh, you know, it's for sale and wanting to kind of, uh, come into the community and make something new, and, you know, we think is very appealing, and is very, you know, good use for, uh, for the community. Tommy's, you know, we, we love to kind of partner with the community, um, you know, get involved in a lot of, a lot of things, and Tommy's, you know, Tommy's across the country get very involved in the community, and, and that people end up loving them, and, uh, you know, becomes a very, a very nice, you know, piece of the, piece, core, core piece of the community. And, uh, you know, we've worked really closely with staff on a lot of this to make sure that we're in compliance. Um, so, I mean, I think there, you know, a lot of that, a lot of those requirements are there for a reason, and we're meeting them all with this plan, and, uh, that's, you know, that's kind of the best we can do. Where, uh, we see those requirements, and we're just trying to be as, uh, you know, compliant with everything, and I think we are with this plan, so, um, we're really excited to be a part of the community and think that, uh, we can definitely put our best foot forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brant. And with that, Commission members, um, unless there's anybody else, and I'll give one last chance here in the audience, if they'd like to speak one more time, come on up and, uh, we'd like to make sure, we're, we're just excited to have you in the chambers, it's been two years, so.
I hear ya, it's nice to be here.
So, please, Mr. Ames, uh, go ahead.
Uh, well, I guess, um, one thing that, uh, I'd like to address is it's, it, it certainly sounds like there's going to be more employees there than parking spaces available, um, for one. And, um, as far as being partnered with the community, um, I really appreciate sentiments about the Ninety-Eighth Street, um, project, and hope to take that to heart, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ames, I appreciate the, uh, comments again here tonight. And with that, uh, Commission, oh, 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 come on up, oh.
Chair, Commissioners, I'd appreciate if they'd let us make a left turn lane into our office building when you're heading east.
Well, we can, uh, we can make sure that, uh, staff, uh, coordinates that with, uh, Public Works.
Because they, they blocked it off, and it wasn't so bad, because we go through between Pierce and King and King and Park and our lot.
And your lot in the back.
And then they, you know, then they put up, I think there's twenty-eight signs between Lindale and Nicollet, you know, and you go down Sixty-Sixth Street in Richfield, and it's just a nice, or like it is in front of Arby's, and they just painted the two yellows and left turn no matter where you want to turn in. So I think there're gonna be a lot of cars backed up on a busy, you know, if, if they're gonna do a couple hundred cars a day on a real nice, bright, sunshiny day, you know, I notice in California, they want to reload a ca- reload a couple Chick-fil-A's, you know, because of they're making a nuisance for traffic in the road, so, so I don't want that to happen there for, I hope it'd be good for business, but not good for us.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you.
All right, did I get everybody now? One more chance. All right, Mr. Olson.
If everybody's saying something, or I'll just throw one other thing in. I know it doesn't apply to the current B-two zoning, but if this were B-four as envisioned, city code would limit it to one drive-through lane.
All right, everybody has spoken their piece, at this point, uh, Commission members, I'd entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to close public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Corman with the second. All right, Commission members, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Onto discussion on this item, Commission members. Um, certainly have had a lot of discussion about noise in the past several months, um, and here we have, uh, potential new use and new noise considerations, so, um, I'll look to you. Commissioner Goldsman? Did you have, yes, I knew you wanted to talk.
I always go first.
You hit the button, so.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, I think the, the biggest thing that I have with questions, concerns around this is really around the development plans. Um, and that's why I asked about the Lindale development plan, and we talked about the Ninety-Eighth development, Ninety-Eighth Street development plan, and really thinking through what did those plans envision. Um, and I think Mr. Olson, who, uh, did public testimony, hit the nail on the head on having a transit-oriented development and really being, uh, you know, walkable and inviting. Um, and I don't see that this meets the vision. Um, I think, Commissioner Cookton said one time that we make a decision today that lasts thirty years. Maybe it was fifty, I can't remember, but this is something that I, I can see that doesn't, doesn't meet the vision in thir- in, in five years or even in ten years. Um, and so I really struggle with this application and supporting it for that reason, for meeting the vision of the Ninety-Eighth Street Station. Um, antedoteally, I also struggle with this new development, which I think would be a nice, you know, it would be bright and shiny. Um, it's really not a, a generator of employment for the city of Bloomington. Um, there, you know, it's a highly automated, um, process and system, which is nice, but looking at, um, an employer that would bring in pretty few jobs, um, and economic opportunities for our residents for how much is going through, um, raises some concerns for me. So, at this point, you know, I, I do see that there is con- conflict with the vision, um, and I'd like to hear what the other Commissioners have to say.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a question for Mr. Markergard. Um, what is the difference between a station plan and a district plan?
Sure. Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton. Uh, so the Lindale retrofit is, uh, considered a small area plan. Um, the Ninety-Eighth Street Station area plan is more of a stationary plan, so looking a half mile out, uh, beyond the station, I would say there's a little bit more, um, influence in the Lindale retrofit plan than the Ninety-Eighth Street Station area plan, uh, which is focused a little more on, uh, improvements to the pedestrian realm. There's some discussion of land use. Um, and Ms. O'Dea actually has a few slides, we can, uh, talk a little bit more about that if you'd like.
I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, so, in terms of the recommendations, um, there are some specific recommendations for this area between, uh, Grand Avenue and Nicollet Avenue, and you can see three, uh, specific recommendations, uh, that one labeled E-one, um, and I think might be on the next page, a little bit more detail. Uh, so basically pedestrian environment upgrades, so as sites redevelop, that the pedestrian infrastructure would be improved. Uh, secondly, adding pedestrian refuge islands, uh, that would be in the medians if somebody were to cross, uh, Ninety-Eighth Street. And then third, uh, removing the free right that's currently at Grand Avenue. So, I guess, the three major recommendations for this area are very pedestrian-focused. And then, if we go to the next slide, in terms of the, uh, recommendations on rezoning, uh, the recommendations, uh, were all within, uh, the area shown on this slide. Um, and some areas were proposed for proactive rezoning, uh, to the B-four district, and those did occur, uh, B-four zone is in place in those areas. And then there were some surrounding areas that were considered transitional, that would be considered on a case-by-case basis, perhaps more market-driven. Uh, so those are in the, uh, hatched area. Um, these recommendations did not extend east of, uh, Grand Avenue.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. I guess I'll go here a little bit. I'm, my concern is, it's actually, has more to do with, um, how it serves the neighborhood. And I think about, right, so the noise was already taken, uh, uh, without the service there. And I went over there today and looked at it, and, and again, the properties to the north, balconies are out front towards, uh, where this business will be. Um, that's really their only recreational area. Um, and I don't know what the cost of those particular, um, apartments or anything, or condos, whatever they might be, um, right there, but what I feel like is we're plopping something down right in front of this residential, and while the letter of the law is met, there is still a rise in noise level. Um, and I think about the component of not just noise in general, uh, but a vacuum cleaner, on, off, on, off, on, off, all day long, um, in front of these people's patios or, or decks. Um, so I'm really struggling with how that is not impacting, uh, the residential character, the neighborhood behind them. And certainly, it's not just north, there's north and west. Um, but then think about those to the south, and while there's traffic there, there isn't always traffic there. And so then, um, and the property, uh, I think it's, uh, to the south and east of where this would be, uh, has a fence, that's some protection. Uh, the property to the, directly to the south does not have a fence. Either way, the properties, um, the space that they would use is gonna be impacted. And I think, to me, that's the question that I'm running into, um, when I think about, um, how does this fit in the neighborhood? The Ninety-Eighth Street plan, um, some pieces that come to my mind are, if we're interested in developing, uh, people to drive toward, to use transit, um, walk towards transit, whatever, why do we put more auto-oriented businesses in the path of that? Um, I don't know that that, and as Mr. Markergard, uh, alluded to, I don't think that that stops this as, uh, the reason right now, it just adds on to the reason why I'm, I'm struggling right now with if I can support this or not. So, uh, those are a couple of my thoughts, um, here, but it really, this, this noise one is, it might meet the letter of the law, but I think it's gonna cause impacts in the neighborhood that I'm not necessarily willing to go for. So, Commissioner Abdi?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I value and recognize the concerns the neighbors, the neighboring businesses have, uh, mentioned. Um, I think looking at the applications before us, and I do recognize when we, if this was a rezoning application, I think all of the questions about the future a- and, and then the relationship between the plans and how that aligns, I think those definitely would have played out more. But because we have a conditional use application in front of us with specific findings, I think I, I'm generally looking at those findings in terms of like, what are decision-making, uh, direction? Um, and I, I recognize one of the findings for the conditional use is looking at the injurious, uh, whether the proposed use will be injurious to the surrounding neighborhood or otherwise harmful to the public health, safety, and welfare. Um, and outside of traffic issues, um, and I think there was a traffic study done, I think it was fine, based on what was provided to us in the report. The other harmful thing that I, we could, we are discussing right now is the noise, and I think, um, the, uh, the engineer, I think the person who presented to us, uh, did show that it was within the parameters that we have allowed in other cases. So I think just looking at what is before us and what is the, the legal findings that we have to provide, I think we are in the parameters, and I, I am in support of the application as presented, recognizing that the residents are gonna get flashed with lighting possibly, traffic is gonna increase. Uh, and those are things that we can come back to look at it, whether the use is permitted, but the way the site is zoned right now, the application before us right now, and the conditional use technically means the use is allowed with specific conditions. So I'm kind of struggling between the desire to look at how the plan, or for the area, it could probably, what is before us right now is probably in conflict with the vision for the area. Um, I recognize that, and I think it's what planners struggle with in the planning department, uh, but sometimes this is a market-driven thing, um, and it's challenging when you want to see the city or this part of the area grow more pedestrian-friendly, but if the current zoning code says this is a use that's allowed with conditions, and our job, at least in my case, is to look at the findings and say this is meeting, or it's not meeting those findings, and I think generally- And I think generally for me, when I make a decision or at least look at these recommendations, legally, I think I would have to like base it on what's before us. So I recognize the challenges, but I feel like this application kind of meets the letter. I'll stop there.
All right. Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Dea, can you speak, because it's come up a couple of times here, can you speak to the amount of discretion we have because of, as a conditional use permit? I believe we have more discretion than we would otherwise have for certain applications. Can you speak to this discretion we have in this case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cookton. Glenn, correct me if I'm wrong, but conditional use permits have a lower discretion than, say, a comp plan amendment or rezoning?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner is very, very correct. So if you look at our discretion pyramid, at the bottom would be final site and building plans for permitted use. A little bit above that is a conditional use permit, which is an allowed use, but it's subject to various conditions that could be applied to mitigate potential concerns. And then that discretion goes up from there, you know, if there are variances requested, code flexibility, rezoning, regiding. So in terms of that discretion pyramid, this is a lower level of discretion, but you do have a lot of ability to add conditions. Thank you.
Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Number of thoughts, consistent with some of the things I've heard from my colleagues on the commission, I think this, for me, is, has some echoes of some other things and that have been before us in my almost four years on this body. And I guess if I'm not right, at least I'm consistent. But I think about, so what I appreciate about this is I appreciate that the applicant has gone and met the things that they've been asked to meet. They have proposed mitigations that meet the noise, they have provided the things that have been presented as far as whether it's parking. And, you know, I appreciate the comments about, you know, it's not a ton of jobs, but I don't know if that's necessarily in an increasingly changing economy. I'm not sure if that is always our barometer, but I don't disagree with the idea that more is better. But for me, and, you know, Commissioner Cookton already alluded to my sidewalk favorite, so I appreciate the sidewalk, but it's not the deal tipper for me on this one. This is, you know, I think about, we had a couple of years ago, maybe in my first year on this body, we had an application that came for an auto-oriented food service establishment that was just, it was, it would have been a fantastic application in ninety-six percent of the rest of the city, but it was just not the right application for that spot. And we had in, within this area, closer to the station, not that long ago, we had another application for a grocery use, which is a fantastic use in that location, but it wasn't inconsistent, it was inconsistent with the vision for that, which, as it was mentioned, you know, the Lyndale plan is more prescriptive. You know, the, in the staff report, it talked about, I think it was required finding two, where it said it was, you know, within the plan, but it was on the edge. Well, something will always be on the edge, but the question for me is, which edge are you on? And this is on the inside edge, so it's in the plan. And I know we, the plan didn't call for this to be zoned differently, and I don't suggest at this time that it should be zoned differently. But for me, it comes back to the question about the auto-oriented nature. And for me, that is not consistent. And so about what findings can we make or not make, to Commissioner Abdi's point, I think it is often the case in this body is we don't have a lot of discretion, but sometimes we do have our opinion on whether or not we do think a finding is made. While I often, almost always am in agreement with the logic that's given to us, this one I don't agree with. And so for the reason of it being inconsistent with the Ninety-Eighth Street Plan, that's the reason I am not able to support this project. Again, much like that food project, restaurant project a number of years ago, lots of other places in the city that it would be a great location, but this one for me doesn't work.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Other commissioners? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Dea, can you go back to some of those additional slides you had about the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan? I'm not about, I'm not about to uncover any new information here, I think I've just forgotten, and want to review the text again, so the area. So I think the key language here is required to create a comfortable, walkable neighborhood. It's pretty subjective. You know, it's code compliance sidewalk. And I, you know, I've never noted a car wash to be all that much worse to walk in front of than anything else. I've walked in front of other car washes and haven't noted anything. So I think that's the real, the real thing that I am still uncertain about in how I'm going to decide on this. Talking about some of the other things, I think, I find it to be compatible enough with residential uses. Ms. O'Dea, do we have any complaints? The Holiday Car Wash is right there. Do we have any complaints on file from the residential uses adjacent to that one?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I am not aware of any complaints.
Okay. And I may not be the only commissioner that used to live in this neighborhood, in the apartments there, but it never bothered me, but that's my own personal taste, I guess. So, yeah, I think-
Chairman, Chairman Commissioner, this is Montel T., Senior Planner. I can give an answer to that one. There have been complaints, they've been driven by when that particular Holiday Station Store was built, they had to keep the doors closed when in operation. When the doors are closed in operation, based on the sound study, it was okay, we never had complaints. The complaints come because the operator uses it with the doors open. And it's been an enforcement difficult situation, but I think we've got it under control, but probably once a year, we have to go back out and remind them.
Thank you, Mr. Pease.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Pease. Ms. O'Dea, if you could go back to the larger kind of outlook of the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan with the radius? Yeah. So the graphic on the left, I think, is what's giving me the most amount of pause. The Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan, which we discussed at length with that previous grocery application, and we're very sensitive to it because it was right in the middle of the Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan, it's just, it's much smaller and more descriptive of what's being asked there. And you look at this half-mile radius circle, and it's encompassing a lot of things. And could I sit here and say nowhere in that green circle can we have a development that's not auto-oriented? Not sure I can get there. And so then I have a hard time making finding number two. And so I'm not sure yet.
Okay. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Dea, could you go to the last slide that we were just on? Yes, thank you. So one of the things that I, when Commissioner Cookton was talking, I came to my mind is, you know, environment required to help create a comfortable, walkable neighborhood. I think about parking or uses in this area, and especially when we look at, you know, when she went through E1 versus E2, E3, I think about car wash, and this is going to provide a consistent stream of exiting and entering cars. Versus if we're looking at something that's an office building, people are going to be there at a specific time, stay for a while, and then leave. So I struggle with a consistent stream of cars entering and exiting, and how that doesn't conflict with a walkable neighborhood or walkable space. And the more I think about it, the more I just don't feel that this really is consistent with the vision of the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan, especially because of that stream of traffic.
Go ahead, Commissioner Corman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And alone, just going along with the Commissioner just said, you know, we're looking into an area where we have a neighborhood and we have a school. There is a strong connection there. We have a lot of students walking in that area. It is already not a very comfortable, walkable place. There is a lot of cars that go through that space, and there has been a number of incidents there too, in that area. So I do worry about what this might mean, not only for our students who are walking around that time of the day, and in other times too, and also after school, but also for other families who live in that area. And, you know, this is supposed to be, or the whole point, what we're trying to do is to make a more friendly area, correct? And so I am not gonna, I just can't say yes to this project.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Corman? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am conflicted on this one. My only immediate thought is that it's that strip between the Arby's, Ace Hardware, Holiday Gas Station is already pretty auto-centric.
Mm-hmm.
And so I tend to, I tend to agree with Commissioner Abdi in that the findings were made, and there's not a lot of discretion that can be done particularly around sort of the Ninety-Eighth Street Area Plan recommendations, which, as Commissioner Cookton said, you know, what is a comfortable, walkable neighborhood? What does that mean? And what does that mean to each individual person? I know Commissioner Cookton is used to a more urban environment, and so he's probably great with it, whereas someone else who wants a really quiet street to walk down, it's going to be different. So I am, I think that I am at this point in support of this application moving forward in that they did meet the findings, they are amenable to the conditions put on, which I agree with regarding noise, and the additional noise study by staff. I would be curious about an additional condition of a right-in, right-out. I'm not exactly sure how much I love that, but I do think that cars that are waiting, like Commissioner Corman said, sort of in that waiting period to turn left, could pose a not comfortable, walkable scenario versus more easily right-in, right-out. That's my only thought.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was a little chat over here because Ninety-Eighth Street, right, is a county road. They would have control over median access, and so I was just asking Mr. Markergard if the county had any thoughts on the topic. So he's going to check. Other thoughts, commissioners? It sounds, nobody is real strong in their convictions here. It doesn't sound like we're all struggling a little bit. So Commissioner Cookton?
It's unlike me not to be strong in my convictions.
I, I'm challenging you.
Ms. O'Dea, I know you're not going to have an exact answer here, but the number of trips coming in and out of this facility, how would that relate to something like the festival foods complex there? Is it similar, or is this significantly more?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, if Brian Hanson is on the call, I'd like him to kind of answer that question, if he's got the information in front of him.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, good evening, Chair and Commission. I don't have the IT trip generation numbers in front of me right now. I would have to look at that. I think that the use of a car wash on this site would be consistent with other uses that you see along the corridor. I mean, specifically looking at a Holiday Station Store just to the east, I think you would see similar trips generated from the site, but without looking at the IT trip generation manual, I don't have that exact answer for you at this time.
So, Mr. Chair, what I'm, thank you. What I'm thinking about here is the walkability piece, and you've got this huge, one-mile diameter circle to deal with. And whatever you say here, you've got to be consistent, right? And so if you say, you know, a car wash is creating too many trips, and it is no longer walkable, I think then you have to make that finding everywhere in the circle, that a car wash is too many trips. And that's the reason I ask that question is, so are other retail uses, like the grocery store or anything else, from a commercial standpoint, generating the same amount of trips? And it kind of sounds like they are, a similar amount of trips. And so then you have to make that finding. So in the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan, are we going to say no more chip, trip generating things? What if this was a Starbucks? Would we feel differently about it? I think we might. And so to Commissioner Abdi's point, I think you have findings to be made. And I can make a finding with compatibility. And so the finding I'm struggling with the most is finding number two with the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan. And I think it's because it's a little, you know, the comfortable, walkable neighborhood piece is subjective. And so in my head, the criteria I'm using to determine whether it's comfortable, walkable, you've got the noise, but that doesn't do much for me because I think Ninety-Eighth Street is already very busy. Even late at night, that's a very busy street. It's loud, there's cars, it's four lanes, there's exhaust. I think it fits the character of what's already there, and I don't see it being substantially worse. If this was being plopped right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, I'd feel differently, but I think it fits the character of what's there and doesn't really make it worse. And so when I think about walkable, comfortable neighborhood, the finding of whether it meets the Ninety-Eighth Street Station Plan, I'm thinking about the number of trips coming in and out of there. And if it's consistent with other things we might like to see in the neighborhood, coffee shop, you know, maybe a quick-serve restaurant, a Chipotle, whatever, if it's consistent with that, and we would allow those uses, I'm not sure I can say, because it's a car wash, I wouldn't. And so, still haven't totally made up my mind, but I seem to be trending to Commissioner Abdi's point of, I've got to make a finding that says we can't do this, and I'm not sure I can get there.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what, based on the slide in front of me right now, the last sentence says, attention to the built environment is required to help create a comfortable, walkable neighborhood. So it's not a matter of the uses surrounding it. I think it's, my interpretation of reading, what I'm reading, it says the built environment, so if there is a good sidewalk, if, you know, there is, you know, enough, I don't know, like, I guess, I don't know what makes a walkable, what is a comfortable, walkable? But the language here is not about what's surrounding uses and what people like, but it's leading to, and staff can correct me here, the language is gearing at the built environment, that it is walk, good walkable space for the community in general. I guess that's maybe a clarification that I would ask of staff, is it's, the language about this recommendation in front of us is intended based on what can be improved in the built environment and not other aspects of what makes a comfortable, walkable, I'll stop there.
Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abdi, we viewed it that way as well, when we kind of walked through the plan. You know, as we reviewed this application, that the specific recommendations for this area were very focused on that, kind of the public realm and the streetscape, and making sure that it's very walkable.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So from the Ninety-Eighth Street, then, they are proposing an eight-foot-wide sidewalk, if I'm correct, Ms. O'Dea. There are median lanes in the street, crosswalks, hopefully, you know, what more, hopefully there's proper lighting for the project, landscaping, so that they're not looking at pavement while they cross the business. I guess what else would be needed based, from the built environment, to make it a comfortable environment for pedestrian? I'm sorry- I'm sorry, but I tend to be very, like, if we're approving a project, then it's based on the findings, and the findings are calling for other specific references. But in my case, I think it's still being met, and I do recognize and value the community's feedback. But I feel like it would be hard for me to deviate from what is before me right now.
All right. Thank you. All right, commission members, any more thoughts? Otherwise, go ahead, Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. One of the questions I have, and just thinking out loud, is Commissioner Cookton, you mentioned, like, festival foods, and that driveway is controlled by a stoplight versus this would not be. Thinking about traffic control, one of my main concerns is there's just the constant traffic flow through, you know, what did I write? A consistent stream. You know, a place like the grocery store has a traffic light that helps pedestrians cross and know when to cross in safety versus this location would not. Does that mitigation factor also need to take into account? I don't know. I'm just thinking about that.
Commissioner Goldsman, I mean, I think, I'll, a couple of words here, from my perspective, this is a bunch of driveways instead of controlled streets, street access. And I was thinking about the bank that we approved has a drive-through, but it's not directly off of 98th Street. It's in through controlled access. So there is, in my mind, there's a bit of a difference, but that's what each of us have to decide.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that point, but I think festival was probably not the, no offense, is not the greatest comparison, but I think the Holiday Station is actually a very good comparison, given that they don't have, there's no light to turn in or out of that Holiday. And it's actually a Holiday I frequent, don't live but a mile away. And frankly, when Commissioner Obdi said that it's a walkable environment, the sidewalk in front of my house is directly adjacent to the street, 98th slash Old Chalkby. That's not a comfortable environment. Having a barrier between the sidewalk and the street, to me, regardless of where it is and what it's in front of, is a much significantly more comfortable, walkable environment. So for me, if the comparison is to the Holiday Station, and that there is no controlled access, or there's no light that is in or out of that area, people seem to manage that just fine. And they have a car wash, which is always busy, I should mention, so there is a demand for more car washes. I agree with fellow commissioners here that the findings are made, and this actually provides a more comfortable, walkable neighborhood, given that there's activation and probably more folks around, which, to me, is a good thing.
Okay. Other commissioners? All right. Oh, Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And I want to echo Commissioner Obdi, how great it is to hear from the public and see the engagement. People have done their research, they care, and that's appreciated, and it's obviously spurred a lot of discussion, so we appreciate that very much. Ultimately, I think where I've landed here is I'm having a hard time finding something that's unique to this property that I wouldn't approve elsewhere in the 98th Street Station When we looked at the grocery application in the Lindell Avenue retrofit plan, there was something very specific there that we could point to that says, "I can't make the finding." And there were actually a lot of things, but one is, like, that building was 120 feet from the street, which was in absolute direct conflict with the Lindell Avenue retrofit plan. It was very black and white to me. In this case, the language is more vague, and talking about comfortable and walkable and those things. And so then I have to use a litmus test of would I approve a similar use that's maybe a little bit more palatable anywhere else in that 98th Street Station Plan? And I think I would. And I'm gonna just keep saying Starbucks, because people like that more than a car wash. But I think it would bring in the same number of trips, and if it was a Starbucks, I wouldn't have any reason not to approve that. The noise doesn't bother me, it's code compliant. I think they've done what they need to do there, so I have to equate it. I can't use that in my decision-making. So to me, it's about making the findings. I can make all the findings, and I think doubling down is the limited amount of discretion we have in this case. We don't have it. And so, you know, I tend to be a champion here of the district plans and have been somewhat critical when we do things that are outside of the district plans. And so I'm a district plan champion. I'm a big believer in thinking big and doing what we want and having high standards, so I've said that a bunch of times. But in this case, I just, I can't find the authority for myself to not allow this application, so I'm gonna be in support of it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. All right. I think everybody's kind of lined up in their corners, if I understand correctly. So at this point, I would entertain a motion from somebody who would like to make it in either direction. Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2022-54, having been able to make the required findings, I move to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an approximately 5,400-square-foot automated car wash located at 200 West 98th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements listed in the resolution.
Oh, just a clarification, was there any thought from the commission? I know it was brought up about a fence condition that was brought up, I think by Mr. Hoffman. Just want to verify from the commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner Obdi. Did you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the applicant was open to that, and it was something that would be beneficial to the neighboring property. So if the applicant is still open to it, I think it, if possible, adding it to it.
So Commissioner, well, so we do have a motion on the table, I just, we can have, let's move to either a second and then we can have discussion. So, yes, I'm looking for a second. Commissioner Cookton?
Not a second. Well, I would like to add comment, if I may.
Okay.
I would second.
Okay. So, commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to adopt a resolution approving the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions and code requirements listed in the resolution. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would not support a fence condition. It's great that the applicant's open to it, and I would, I think it's great, but I think that's a burden being placed on them that's a nice-to-have but not a need-to-have. And so I'm not ready to, as a public body, to put that on top of them.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further discussion on that item? All right. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just echo Commissioner Cookton. It's a, the data we have about noise suggests that it meets the requirement if this moves forward, so I would not support that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Commission members, having a motion and a second in front of us, in case PL 2022-54, and having been able to make the required findings, will adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for approximately 5,400-square-foot automated car wash located at 200 West 98th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements listed in the resolution. We did, didn't we?
Yeah. I'm not positive.
Did we close the public hearing? Just to verify.
I'm pretty sure I made a motion for that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
And Commissioner Corman seconded.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Corman. Thank you for seconding. All right. So commission members, all those in favor of adopting the resolution to approve the conditional use permit, and please be slow about this so I can make sure I get the correct ones, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. I got, so I'm gonna go through names, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cookton, Commissioner Obdi, Commissioner Albrecht, anybody else? All right. All those against, same sign, aye.
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 All right. So we got myself, well, it's four to three. That motion did not pass. All right. Commission members, as we've done in the past, would somebody else like to make a motion in the opposite to affirm a denial of the conditional use permit?
So, Mr. Chair, just one comment on a denial. If that is the intent of the commission, my recommendation would be to request a resolution of denial, and then we would put that together to reflect all of the reasons you would like reflected in that.
Okay. And do we need to call those out again for you, or do you have sufficient?
Yeah, we've heard several of them, but if you can call out anything specific, that's very helpful. And what we would do is then request continuance to the next meeting. We would draft that for your consideration and bring it back.
So ultimately, this would be continued, then?
Correct. Mr. Chair, it would be a continuance and a request for a resolution of denial, that we draft that for your review. That's if denial is the intent of the commission. And the reason we would be doing that for this item, and we don't do that on most items, is because in most cases, you're making a recommendation to the city council. In this case, you're making an actual denial.
Okay. All right. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Roman?
Generally, yes.
Okay. I'm just thinking here, before we go too much further, should we just go through the next one for the final site and building plan to confirm that, and then come back if, for any resolution?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, one catch on that is without the conditional use permit, even if the final site and building plan were approved, you would not be able to do the use.
So do we need to move on that just for clarity, or not?
I guess, just taking into consideration, when a motion is made on that item, that you would have to have the conditional use approved in order to do the use.
All right. That's clear as mud. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you. Well, I am, Mr. Markergard, so you would not be necessarily looking for a motion of denial tonight, you would be looking for a direction to prepare a resolution of denial.
And a continuance.
Yeah. And again, I think, for me, the sole reason in the resolution for me would be incompatibility with the 98th Street Station Area Plan. I don't know if others have others, but that would be the, you were looking for direction for what to include in that, and that would be the sole reason I would put forward.
Okay. So, other commission members, any thoughts as to what you would like to see in the resolution of denial? I, myself, think, I'm still back at this, in addition to that, 98th Street Plan is the, while the noise does meet the letter of the law, we are meeting that, that is fine, but there is this subjective area of injurious to the neighborhood. And I just feel increasing that noise and up to the level that it's at, especially to the properties to the north, is injurious to the neighborhood. Maybe you do or don't feel that, and that's fine, but that's really the other issue that I have. So, Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would also like to add that this subject area is specifically called out in E1 of the 98th Street Station Plan, where it talks about school proximity and students walking from school towards the station. I think that's a differentiator between this property location and maybe something else that's in the 98th Street Station Plan, that might, you know, that this type of use could potentially be okay. It's really that E1 pedestrian piece that this location is included in.
Same, Commissioner Corman?
Yeah, I'll just agree once again that this type of business that not really meet that, what we're looking for, and it's not neighborhood-friendly. I do not see the benefit to the neighborhood.
I mean, just in addition, I think office building, I think somebody made the comment before, office buildings, and while we don't know the exact number, the in-out use of a car wash is different than the current uses that are there. And so I just think it makes it more intense, which is difficult to Commissioner Cookton's comments of, if it's a Starbucks, would we say the same thing? And I think if it had a three-lane drive-through, yeah, we'd probably say the same thing. That's at least, that's my point, which probably isn't the strongest comment in this. Again, I go more back to the noise is really an issue for me, so.
Commissioner Roman?
Oh, I was just gonna ask Mr. Markergard if he had a date certain that we would continue this item to, and I think, at this point, I'm not sure we have anything new to add that we, I'm respectful of the time of those who've joined on all sides of this issue.
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, I'd suggest April 28th, Planning Commission meeting, which is your next meeting.
Okay. And I don't know if any of my colleagues would object to that motion at this time, or if there's other things to add.
Commissioner Corman?
I wanted to say just one more thing. I just want to clarify, and I don't mean to say that a car wash is not beneficial to a neighborhood. I'm just giving the area and giving what the type of businesses that are already in that area, and the many different factors that everybody talked about it. I do not see the benefit of the neighborhood at this point.
All right. And I will make note that I will not be at the April 28th Planning Commission meeting to complicate matters. All right. Commission members, I think, for those who would like to continue.
Well, I want, I mean, this is a, this is a decision that, it's a decision level at this, or it's a decision item at this level. Would it be, is there a reason that we usually typically take the next one? Is there agency action that we would not be able to continue it to perhaps the meeting after that? I want to be able to give clarity to the applicant or to the community that they know their direction of appeal versus having something that is, if I was to guess, in two weeks, it would be a tie vote.
To which you're the final authority, so you gotta make a decision. Go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
I, I'm not sure that we should be making decisions on when to move things based on the attendance of specific council members.
Sure.
I mean, if we're moving it to the 12th, I could go, I can't be at this meeting.
Right. That's exactly it.
That's all I have to say about that.
That's exactly it.
Then I guess I will make a motion to continue this item to the April 28th Planning Commission meeting.
With the direction to draft a resolution of denial?
Correct.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Roman to continue the public hearing to the April 28th and direct staff to draft a resolution of denial. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Goldsman has made a second. All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to continue this item to the April 28th Planning Commission meeting and to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial. Any further discussion on that item?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, just a clarification, is the motion for the conditional use permit, or both, conditional use permit and final site and building plans? Just for the record.
Commissioner Roman?
I would say it's for the conditional use permit, because we've heard that if there is no conditional use permit, there is not a need for a second.
Yep.
Well, Mr. Chair, we will need a second motion on the final site and building plans, but you can handle it through two motions if you'd like to.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the resolution. I thought you were asking about the resolution of denial. This is to continue both items, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So clarity, thank you for the clarity on your motion, this is a motion to continue both items in PL 202-2-54 until the April 28th Planning Commission meeting, and draft a resolution of denial for the conditional use permit.
Correct.
Okay, so now that we're clear on that, any further discussion? Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I want to be respectful to the applicant here in that if we're gonna come back in two weeks and we have a split vote, I mean, I, I hate to be the bureaucracy that just doesn't end things, and, I mean, we're a bunch of reasonable people up here, and is, I wish there was a way we could finish this tonight, all seven of us are here, we, we've counted the heads, it's four to three. I wish there was a way we could put some finality to this instead of, let's give me two more weeks, and then oh, let's wait till Commissioner Solberg's back, so we'll go another two weeks, and it's, it's kind of crazy to me when we've got all of us here, we've made up our minds, nothing's gonna change. I wish we could do something about that.
Mr. Markergard, any thoughts? I certainly can appreciate Commissioner Cookton's thoughts, but I know you have to draft.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, the alternative would be for us to take a break in the meeting and then kind of throw together a resolution of denial, which we would not recommend, just because we'd want to review your full discussion and make sure we incorporate every item into that resolution. Because that resolution could be very important down the road if there's a legal challenge, for example.
I appreciate the sentiment of wanting to get it right. Maybe this is something I shouldn't ask in a public forum, but Commissioner Solberg, is there opportunity for you to join remotely?
I don't believe so. Unless the middle school choir allows me to chime in from, from a choir concert, so. Unfortunately, that option is not available, so. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Markergard, again, just now, I, I agree with Commissioner Cookton, which is actually what my initial goal was with the question of timing, is to give certainty to the applicant and to those members of the public, both of who would have a recourse based on our decision. If, it said, because this is a final decision item, if there is a split vote, what is the direction that goes forward?
Mr. Chair, commissioners, so when you're making a recommendation to the city council and have a split vote, it moves on without a recommendation? In this case, as final decision maker, until we have a majority, we don't have a, a decision, so it's imperative that we have a, a resolution, one way or the other.
So maybe just for clarity for the applicant, I hate to go down, we're, we're making a bunch of, of what-ifs. I, I recognize everybody's position could potentially change, but would it forsake of the applicant? Is there an ability to clarify with the applicant if they are willing to extend any time, the city has to make a decision? Or not, because I think that might help. And there's also, I suppose, yes, the appeal to the city council, right, by, if they don't get a decision?
Yes, so, Mr. Chair, commissioners, looking at our agency action deadlines, our 60 days expires May 8th. However, the city is able to unilaterally extend that another 60 days, which would take it to July 7th. Now, we do need to consider the appeal process. If it were denied, it's probably fairly likely the applicant would appeal to the city council. We don't know that for sure. So, we definitely have time to continue to your next meeting. Possibly a meeting beyond that, we would need to look at the appeal process and whether that needs to be conducted within the 120 days in terms of, could we even go beyond that? And then, the applicant always has the ability to extend beyond that if they, if they were to choose to.
Commissioner Cookton?
And if I'm correct, if we don't take action by the agency action deadline, that is an approval.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, that's correct, if there is no action taken, the application would be approved without conditions.
Without conditions.
Right.
Commissioner, go ahead.
I, yeah, I, I, I guess I would, I, I would recommend maybe we call a, a 10-minute recess while, to give Mr. Markergard time to confer with council on if there is a possible solution to this this evening that legal would be comfortable with.
All right, so we have one motion on the table.
Sorry, I will, I will retract my motion.
Who's our, who's our, who's our Roberts Rules of Order expert here?
The chair can call a, a recess.
Yes, we can call a recess, so we'll go ahead and call a recess for the next, what time is it?
7:55.
7:55, how about we come back at 8:10? That'll give you 15 minutes, Markergard, to have some discussion, so with that, we will be in recess until 8:10, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard.
We are back. We'll go ahead and call to order our meeting again after our now 18-minute recess. And with that, Mr. Markergard, what did you find out for us?
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners conferred with our Assistant City Attorney, Kevin Toski, and our strong recommendation would be not to draft a resolution of denial this evening. And the reason for that is that we need to make sure that any resolution of denial is very thorough and fully reflects your discussion this evening. And anytime we're drafting that on the fly, inevitably, we're going to miss things. So we would recommend definitely a continuance if you'd like to deny it. And in terms of dates for the continuance, you really have three to choose from. Any of your next three meetings. Yeah, we looked at all of the council dates, planning commission dates, kind of determined, given the agency action deadline, how quickly that would need to move, given a possible appeal to the city council. So we would need some action from the planning commission at one of your next three meetings. And it's kind of up to you which meeting to continue it to. But yeah, so it would be either the May meetings or April 28th would be feasible meetings for a continuance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. So, Commission, with that, any of the dates outlined certainly gives us availability, yes, for 28th, May 12th, and May 26th, any of those dates to make an action. So with that, I don't know, we had, the motion in front of us was to continue, so that would be to the next, we didn't date a date specific. I don't know if there's specific wishes, but certainly at this point, it would be April 28th, I'm assuming. Go ahead, Commissioner Roman.
Thank you. Mr. Markergard, in any continued to whatever date, if it was the next available meeting, the resolution would be presented at that point. It would be just a, would it be a commission discussion of the resolution? Or would it be a return, would we reopen a public hearing on the resolution? Or how would that work?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Roman, you have closed the public hearing tonight. So unless the commission reopened the public hearing, it would not reopen. It would be just a discussion among the commissioners, absent that.
As you may recall, we've continued the public hearing to date certain in the past, so this is a little bit different.
Right. Yeah, I guess, I don't know other thoughts, but in, recognizing what we discussed earlier, I would, I would recommend that we would continue it to the next meeting. And then if we find ourselves unable to reach a decision one way or the other, we then have two more times to continue it to the point of not necessarily thinking about who is or isn't here, but we, at some point, we get to a decision one way or the other, so if...
Yep, that sounds good, Commissioner Roman. And it gives the applicant the most amount of time to understand what opportunity...
Given it's not a reopen public hearing, it's, doesn't necessarily require folks to make another trip out two or three times.
Yep. Okay. All right, so, Commission members, with that, I think we can make sure, I want to make sure that we're clear on this then with the continuance. And we have the motion in a second in front of us of continuing. We didn't say April 28th, but I think the common understanding is that it's to the next meeting?
Would you like me to clarify my motion?
Could you please clarify your motion?
I move to continue both the conditional use permit and final site and building plan action items to the April 28th meeting of this commission.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, Commission members, with that clarification, we do have that motion in front of us to continue to the April 28th, or April 28th Planning Commission meeting and to direct staff to draft a resolution of denial. Any further discussion? Commissioner Cookton.
I'm sorry to keep drawing this out, Mr. Chair, but I think it's as important. So we bring it to the April 28th meeting. In our minds, we're thinking, one of us is gone and it's a tie. Well, what if two of us are gone? So we're just, there's no understanding that we're waiting for all seven. There's no, we're just, we're going to move it forward. There's no additions on that. We're just moving it forward. That's what I would say.
That is correct. I think that gives the applicant as well, the, you know, the best understanding that we're not, that this is not being stacked, this is not being predetermined, this is...
I think that's the fair way to do it.
Yep. All right, so with that...
You end up at the third possible meeting. That may make other people think differently if there continues to be a split, knowing that no action becomes action.
And one other question, Mr. Chair, Mr. Markergard, does this need four votes for approval? Or is it a majority? So is a 3-2 different than a 4-3?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, it needs a majority of members present.
Of members present, as long as, you got to have your quorum.
We would have to have a quorum. Thank you.
All right, Commission members, all those in favor of continuing this item as laid out in the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. This will again be continued until the April 28th Planning Commission meeting. Moving forward onto item number three, which is TIF redevelopment plans for 8200 Humboldt Avenue South to determine consistency with the comprehensive plan. And I believe, let's see, Michaela, you're on to give a staff update for us?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Michaela Hewitt from Baker-Tilly. Glenn, I'm not sure if, I know, if there is a PowerPoint, I know it's only a couple of slides, but I wasn't sure if you had that, or...
Yeah, Michaela, do you have a copy? You could share that. Or if Ms. Coleman can email that to me, I can bring it up as well.
If you give me a second, let me switch devices and I can, I can pull it up.
This has got to be stunning watching at home tonight.
Sorry.
All right, looks like Mr. Markergard's conquered the technology, so...
Were you able to, sorry, were you able to locate it?
Yeah, Michaela, I just need to share it just a second.
Oh, sorry.
Keyboard is frozen here.
Mine is too, so I... I'm spinning, otherwise I would pull it up.
Problems when we were remote.
We didn't. Sorry about this.
Yeah, right, right. Oh, my microphone didn't turn on.
Yeah, my keyboard is frozen, that's the problem.
I can, I can just start if that...
Why don't you go ahead and if we get a graphic or whatever, that's fine, too. I think we're seeing the motion in front of us for the resolution. I don't think that maybe the folks at home aren't going to be able to see it, but they can, they can listen to your presentation.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chair, finally, after much delay, we have it up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Again, the, just a brief overview on the project. The city and HRA received a request for tax increment financing related to redevelopment of the building located at 8200 Humboldt. The developer is proposing to redevelop the existing substandard office building into a new residential rental development that will comprise of 149 housing units, of which at least 9% are required to be affordable. The part, project will include underground parking. And the action tonight for the Planning Commission is that there are several findings that the city needs to make. One is that the project qualifies as a redevelopment district. Two, that the proposed development would not reasonably be expected to occur but for the use of tax increment financing. That the TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole. And that the, both the tax increment financing plan and the redevelopment financing plan conformed to the general plans for development of the city as a whole. You'll see here in the map, they're showing the boundaries of the proposed redevelopment tax increment financing district as well as the proposed 8200 Humboldt redevelopment plan. The boundaries of the tax increment financing plan and the redevelopment plan are, would be conterminous. So again, the, the purpose of the review tonight is to review both the TIF plan and the redevelopment plan to determine that they are consistent with the general plans for development of a whole and along with the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the project or the proposed district.
All right, thank you, Michaela. I think Planning Commission members should be pretty familiar with this project. We just had it very recently. But I will ask, Commission members, any questions for staff on this? Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think this is a question, question for Mr. Markergard. Do we have other single parcel TIF districts in the city of Bloomington?
Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I believe we do, but I would, Michaela's been involved in so many, I would ask her, if she can think of any.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the, several of the more recent tax increment financing and redevelopment plans that have been established in the city have all been both single, or single parcel districts and redevelopment plans. So over the last year, I can, at least Lyndale Flats and 80, 812 Old Cedar, as well as Village Club, were all individual, single parcel, or, you know, individual project districts and project areas.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Not seeing any, and this is not a public hearing. So it's just discussion for Planning Commission members and then motion when the time is ready. So, Commission members, any other thoughts or questions? Commissioner Roman, anything?
You, you looked at me, you got it. These, these, just my thought, these are, for me, like, small cell towers, so we, we have to act on them, but we don't really have any ability to find anything other than yes, because, I mean, I think in this case, we modified the comp plan, so it, I know we need to vote on this. It just feels like a process that we don't really have any bureaucracy at it.
bureaucracy at its best.
Nothing different comes out of it.
Commissioner Cookton, you have additional thoughts?
I actually spent a lot of time on this last night. And I agree with you. What I ultimately landed on was that we don't have any discretion. But that doesn't mean I necessarily liked it. And so I'll go on for a minute here with the understanding that ultimately, there's, it is what it is. I struggled a little bit with precedent in that I was I didn't find us to be getting an extraordinary benefit out of this project. If I recall, the amount, and maybe I can ask Mr. Markergard, were we getting an extraordinary amount of affordable housing from this application, or was it meeting the baseline of the OHO?
Mr. Markergard?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, it was meeting the 9% requirement, but it was a little more aggressive as so far as they were doing it at 50% AMI rather than 60% requirement.
Thank you. And that's that's what I found as well. And so that's a little bit more than minimum, but not much more. And so I I was concerned, we were setting a precedent that anybody that's creating affordable housing gets a TIF district. And creating affordable housing at 9% affordable housing is code. And so how are we not setting a precedent that was to stop the next guy from asking for a TIF district? So I was quite concerned about setting a precedent. What I ultimately found after reading Ms. Hewitt's report a lot is that the the decision, the deciding, like the tipping point was that was the existing building. And that this existing blighted building and getting rid of that is an extraordinary cost to the applicant and that they should be awarded TIF fund financing to get rid of that. And then that sort of breaks precedent, that that's not going to happen everywhere. So I think I could get there with that. As a concept, and again, there's nothing we can do about the concept. But as a concept, I'm not a huge fan of it. I'm actually a TIF guy. Like, I I'm a believer in TIF, and I think we're right to be pretty aggressive with it. I don't love what it can be used on. To me, like I said, the deciding factor of getting TIF is getting rid of the blighted building. So in my mind, the only thing you should be able to put TIF dollars towards is getting rid of the getting rid of the blighted building. But they're allowed, the applicant is allowed to use TIF financing on site acquisition and some overhead type of things. I don't really like that. I don't think, because you would have had to do that anyway. And so why why should they be awarded TIF for that? I didn't really like that. I'm not really comfortable with that, but there's nothing I can do about that. So to make the findings, I can make the findings. I'll be in support of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. All right, anybody else? Thoughts or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder, Michaela, if you could talk a little bit about the but-for approach for TIF financing?
Sure, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so the and I can appreciate the comments on, you know, sort of the with the but-for test and, you know, the need for financial assistance with this project. And I think, as was mentioned, you know, this is an existing existing blighted blighted building. And so there are significant costs associated with acquiring the site, demolishing it, and then redevelopment. There was significant financial analysis done related to the the projected pro forma of the developer in proposing this site. And in reviewing the financials, they're due to the projected total development costs, which I think everyone's getting tired of hearing the the increased costs related to the current environment. But this is an approximate $44 million project investment. The the taxable value is roughly 300, or excuse me, 30 million once the project is is completed. But with the financial analysis that we completed reviewing the the total development costs, the the projected sources of revenue and the operating performance of the project when it's completed, there is a annual deficit in the short in the cash flow, and the tax increment does provide that additional revenues to the the project that makes it financially feasible to support both the debt repayment and meet the developers' minimum equity requirements. One other thing I wanted to mention on the financing is with the the way that the tax increment is structured, the the HRA is able to retain approximately 20% on average over the life of the of the tax increment district that could be available for other potential redevelopment projects. So while it is structured as a large portion of increment pledged to the developer up in the earlier years, that amount is reduced in the later years to average 20% retained to to try to implement other opportunity redevelopment opportunities.
Turn my microphone back on. Thank you, Michaela. Any other questions? Commissioner Cookton?
Comment, okay?
Comments are okay, too.
All right, so.
Limited to two minutes.
Thank you. No. I appreciate what Ms. Hewitt has told us, and that is that is the case, and I have no problem with the applicant using the tools available to them. That's what they should do. That's what they're there for. Where I get kind of hung up on the concept of it is, well, if the project didn't pencil out, then I don't think it's the city job, the city's job to make projects pencil out through TIF. I'm, I like the concept of covering the extraordinary costs of of helping the city by removing a blighted building, but site acquisition? I don't think it's the city's job to to cover that. I don't like the concept, but that's where we are.
All right.
And, Mr. Chair, just one thing to remind the commission about is your scope is limited to whether it's consistent with the comp plan or not, not whether you like the TIF or the financing, but just is it consistent with the comp plan? And it is a statutory requirement, so state requirement. It's not a city requirement that you review it. It's yeah, we can't do it without your review.
All right. All right, with that, Commission members, unless there's any further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt a resolution finding that the 8200 Humboldt Avenue South redevelopment plan and TIF plan are consistent with the Bloomington comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commission members, we have a motion in front of us. Is there a second? I'll second it. All right, Commission members, there's a motion and a second in front of us to adopt a resolution finding that 8200 Humboldt Avenue South redevelopment plan and TIF plan are consistent with the Bloomington comprehensive plan. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item number four, which is Planning Commission synopsis. So, Commission members, just for your information on these, we can make a motion that covers all three. However, just so everybody knows, for clarity on voting, all members were present on January 27th. Commissioner Albrecht, you were gone on February 3rd. And all members were present on February 17th. Or we can make three separate motions, so. It's up to Commission members, but Commissioner Albrecht, you would know what you would need to do then. Go ahead, Commissioner Roman.
I'll go, I'll be creative. I move to approve the Planning Commission minutes from January 27th and February 17th.
Oh.
Second.
All right, Commission members, we have a motion in front of us to approve the draft Planning Commission synopsis of January 27th and February 17th as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, Planning Commission members, we have the Planning Commission synopsis from February 3rd. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to approve February 3rd Planning Commission meeting synopsis as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Goldsman. All right, we have a Planning Commission, we have a motion in front of us to approve the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from February 3rd, 2022 as presented. And again, Commissioner Albrecht, you were gone on that particular date. So all those in favor, say aye by roll call?
Aye.
Sorry, I'm referring back to my old, all those in favor, say aye. All those abstaining, same sign?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Let the record reflect, Commissioner Albrecht abstained from that vote. And moving on to item number five, Planning Commission policy and issue update. Mr. Markergard?
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, looking forward to our next meeting, April 28th. We will have two items on the agenda. Item you continued this evening, and then there's a conditional use permit application for a sports training facility at 2001 West 94th Street. And then the following meeting, May 12th. So far, we just have one item on the agenda. City code amendment for a multifamily parking standard update. So that's what we have so far.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. All right, Commission members, is there anything you'd like to bring up to Planning Staff at this point? For thoughts or future consideration? Not seeing any at this point, then we will conclude our April 14th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to thank everybody that stayed with us throughout the whole time. Thank you all.